For the pledge allegiance and invocation given by Councilman Higgin.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, we thank you for another day. Lord, we ask that you be in the midst of this meeting, guide us and direct us. Lord, protect us from all hurt, harm, and danger. Lord, just show us that we can do a better job and do the job that's set before us to make our city a better place for all the residents in this great city. We ask for all these blessings in your son Jesus' name. We pray. Amen. Also, just keep in your prayers the Smith family and the loss of their uncle, Aaron Smith. Number one on the agenda is roll call. Roll call.
Markovich.
Spitali.
Here.
Vanez.
Here.
Kowinski.
Here.
Salinas.
Here.
Poland.
Here.
O Pinker.
Here.
Henosa. Higgs.
Here. Let the record reflect, eight are present and one is absent. Number two on the agenda, number three on the agenda is read another minute.
Mr. President.
Councilman O Pinker.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes from 9:26:11.
It's been motion by Councilman O Pinker, second by Councilman Kowinski, that we approve the minutes of 9:21. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any discussion on the minutes? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion pass. Number four on the agenda is approval claims, approval of claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Do you have some additions to the claims? Claim number fifty-three thirty-four.
Councilman, point of order. First, we have to have a first and second on the claims, and then you can amend in the claims.
Thank you very much.
You've been here how many years?
I'm having a senior moment.
Oh, my lord. Alzheimer's kicking in. All right, now, is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman, that we approve the claims.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
Move for approval of claims from September twenty-first to October nineteenth for council meeting October twenty-fourth, starting with claims dated nine twenty-nine eleven and ending with claims dated ten nineteen eleven, claims number forty-seven sixty-four through claims number fifty-three thirty-three. I so move.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we accept claims dated September twenty-first, two thousand and eleven, through October eleventh nineteen, excuse me, two thousand and eleven, for council meeting scheduled October twenty-fourth, two thousand and eleven. Is there any discussion on the claims?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I'd like to make a change on page eight of the claims list for claim number forty-nine ninety-three. It says Indiana Tech Human Relations College bound, one hundred ninety-eight thousand two hundred and sixty-one dollars and three cents. It should be Indiana University Bloomington.
So on claims forty-nine ninety-one.
No, 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 I didn't say that. It says forty-nine ninety-three. Change it to Indy, instead of Indiana Tech, it's going to be Indiana University.
What about the other two claims?
The other two are okay. That is Indiana Tech of Fort Wayne. This was just a typo there.
So the correction should be number forty-nine ninety-three, and it should be Indiana.
University.
University.
I make that in form of a motion. I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich and second by Councilman Spitali that we insert and take out claim number forty-nine ninety-three, take out Tech and put Indiana University in for a claim number one ninety, for a total amount of one ninety-eight two sixty-one oh three. That claim number is four-nine-nine-three.
Can we vote on that? All in favor, Mr. Chairman, now, please?
We can do a roll call vote, because we're inserting another name into the claims. Then we're going to have to come back and approve them, and then you can do the amendment. Okay? How's that?
However you want to do it.
Seems the correct way to me. So we inserted that name. So now we're going to vote, we're going to do a roll call vote on the insertion of this name, taking out Tech and putting Indiana University. Roll call vote.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes.
Henosa. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one is absent. Now claims is read.
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I have a couple more amendments.
You making a motion to amend in?
Yes, sir.
Can you please say that?
Make a motion to amend.
In. In. In?
I have several, Mr. Chairman.
Several, okay. There's a motion to amend in.
Claim number fifty-five-three-three-four, Ball State University, one hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Fifty-five what?
Five-three-three-four.
Five-three-three-four.
Ball State University.
For how much?
One hundred eighty-three dollars and fifty cents.
Okay. Next claim.
Claim number five-three-three-five, Calumet College of Saint Joseph, seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five.
Seventy-three.
Three twenty-five. I'm sorry, seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five.
Next claim.
Claim number fifty-five-three-three-six, Earlham College, E-A-R-L-H-A-M, seven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
What's that number again?
Seven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars.
Lot of amendments tonight. Continue, Councilman Markovich.
Claim number five-three-three-seven, I-U-P-U-I, Indianapolis.
Amount?
Seventy-six thousand two hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents.
Next one?
Claim number five-three-three-eight.
And amount?
Purdue University Lafayette.
How much?
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Two hundred and twenty-seven thousand and what?
Two hundred and sixty-four dollars. Claim number five-three-three-nine, to Councilwoman Poland, two hundred and seventy-four dollars and eighty-one cents to attend the IAC conference in Indianapolis. There, second. No, I have another one, sir. Claim number five-three-four-zero, Act and Try Contracting, twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Twenty-four thousand what?
Twenty-four thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-eight cents, dumpsters for second district fall cleanup.
Next one?
That's it. I so move.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilwoman Poland, that we amend in claims fifty-three thirty-four for one eighty-three fifty for Calumet College. Claim number fifty-three thirty-five for seventy-two thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars for Earlham College. Next claim is fifty-three thirty-six, we're amending in for seven thousand one hundred and seventy-eight dollars for I-U-P-U-I University. Next claim is fifty-three thirty-seven for seventy-six two fourteen-ten for Purdue University. Next claim is fifty-three thirty-eight for two hundred and twenty-seven thousand two sixty-four. What was that for again?
I'm sorry, which one?
Two twenty-seven two sixty-four.
Purdue Lafayette.
Purdue Lafayette. So what was seventy-six two fourteen-ten? If Purdue was two.
I-U-P-U-I.
I-U-P-U-I.
Indiana University, Purdue University, Indianapolis.
And fifty-nine thirty-nine for two seventy-four eighty-one for conference for the I Act for Councilwoman Poland.
Fifty-three thirty-nine.
Fifty-three thirty-nine for I Act, two seventy-four eighty-one conference. And then for Act in fifty-three forty is the number, claim number, and it's for twenty-four thousand two forty-two eighty-eight for dumpsters for Councilman Salinas District. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call vote on the amendment.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes.
Henosa. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one is absent. Now claims is read. Claims is read. Any discussion? Any discussion on the claims? 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 Roll call vote on the claims.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes.
Henosa. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor and one is absent. Next on the agenda is a public hearing, number A, for the twenty-twelve proposed salary district budget. Anyone wishing to speak on this item and this item alone may do so by approaching the podium and address the council. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now closed. Next on the agenda is communications. Is there any communication? Any communications? Any communication? Any communications? Communications is now closed. Next on the agenda is committee reports. Committee reports.
Mr. President.
Councilman O Pinker.
Council as a whole, I would like to bring out eleven thirty-nine A as amended.
Second.
Are there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Clerk Golick, you don't have thirty-nine A. They brought that in the caucus.
We only have eleven thirty-nine. There is no eleven thirty-nine A.
Yeah, yeah, they gave it to us. Can we get another copy of eleven thirty-nine A, please? Business manager from San Francisco. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Clerk didn't, he didn't get an opportunity to get that. Are there any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Any other committee reports? Committee reports is now closed. Next. Is ordinances on third reading and final passage.
Mr. President.
Ordinances on third reading and final passage. That would be eleven dash thirty-nine. Making a motion?
Making a motion to bring out. You want to read it first, clerk? Or you want?
The title.
I said the title, but I was waiting for it. Just read the title.
Doesn't make a difference to me which direction you guys want to go. You want to read it, clerk, or you want him to go ahead and make the motion?
Ordinance eleven dash thirty-nine, the two thousand twelve proposed sanitary district budget.
Councilman O Pinker.
Mr. President.
Councilman O Pinker.
I'd like to make a motion to amend in eleven thirty-nine A. Second.
We already passed thirty-nine, but he has to. Go ahead, clerk. I'm listening. We already... So we got to pass thirty-nine and then go back and amend thirty-eight. Thirty-nine A?
Eleven thirty-nine has called down a motion to, a motion to pass the amendment eleven thirty-nine A will replace everything eleven thirty-nine. Eleven thirty-nine has to be called down first.
So rescind. Who's second? Your motion?
Second. Me.
Okay. Rescind your second.
I rescind my second.
Rescind your first. Your motion. Mike.
Rescind it.
Now, make your motion for eleven dash thirty-nine.
Like to make a motion, move for third and final reading of thirty-nine A.
No, not A.
No, eleven thirty-nine. I'm sorry. Second.
It's been motion by Councilman O Pinker and second by Councilman Salinas that we pass eleven dash thirty-nine on this third and final reading. Is there any discussion on eleven dash thirty-nine?
Mr. President.
Councilman Mark, uh, Councilman O Pinker.
I'd like to amend eleven thirty-nine A.
A.
A. Second.
It's been motion by Councilman O Pinker, second by Councilman Salinas, that we amend in eleven dash thirty-nine A. Is there any discussion on eleven dash thirty-nine A?
Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
I would request that the financial consultant come to the microphone to ask a couple, answer a couple of questions, please.
That would be fine, even though we know what the numbers were changed in a document, but that's what you want. Please state your name and the particulars of where you work.
My name is Kyle Small. I work at Crowe Horwath LLP as a municipal consultant.
Thank you. Councilman Markovich, is there any question?
Mr. Chairman, Kyle, I know that the controller said that this money was for debt service because of increase in debt service and because of a new state law, because I think it was increased by two point nine-three percent, that it has to come before the, this body of the city council to approve that budget. That's correct, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Any of this money that's going, is any of this going for administrative fees? Do you know?
There, the budget, the budget entirely, there is three sets of the budget. There is an operation and maintenance portion of the budget. There is a debt service, and then there is a debt service exempt that compose the sanitary district budget. The O and M budget does have salaries, you know, the typical operation and maintenance expenses to operate the district. The other two portions of the budget are solely to pay the debt service.
Is there any money allotted in this over this two point nine-three percent? Is any of it there for capital outlay or expenses or new capital projects? Do you know?
The new debt service comprises the, the new capital outlay that they have. Their capital improvement plan is based upon the debt service that they have to fulfill for the project relating to the combined sewer overflow.
And where is that going to be done at? Do you know? What section of the district where it is? It's going to be sewer separation?
It's going to be related to the basin that they are putting in, I believe it is between Columbia and Calumet, I believe.
Okay. I'm looking at page four of four, of the new thing that was given to us, budget.
Okay.
And in page four, it says capital outlay. The published amount was five hundred six thousand, but they only adopted twenty-five thousand.
That is correct.
Why is that?
They cut back on the amount of projects they were trying to do to keep the tax rate as low as possible. They allowed twenty-five thousand, which could be a, I mean, they could have a, a main break, or they could have some unplanned repair, but they wanted to plan that twenty-five thousand for.
This, do you know if any of this new capital outlay is going to be for Munster at all?
I do not know specifically, no.
Attorney's got a question that he posed to me, and I would... Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
If you would allow Mr. Berger to ask any question or questions he may have.
Attorney Berger, you have questions for the consultant?
Before the meeting, I think the city controller gave me what they called a signature page that I would think should be part of the ordinance. Do you have it?
I, I mean, we.
His question was, there should be a signature page attached to the document. Is there a signature page, or do you have one that you can present to this body?
Yes, we do.
Can you do so, please?
Yes.
Clerk Golick says he, Attorney Berger, Clerk Golick says he has a signature page.
Oh, you do?
No, they're not. And what happens is a one, two, two a two, two a three, three a four.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was thinking that was going to be the first page. But my other question was, I think it was explained that by adopting the sanitary district budget, the, the amount of the levy for the civil city was going to be affected. Is that true?
Yes, it is affected. The civil city rate is adjusted downward for what the increase in the district rate will be to cover this debt service, because you only have the overall base from the city that the district is a part of in the tax role.
But then does that affect the budget that the council just adopted?
Well, I believe, and I'll defer to Bobby, but I believe that that was included in the city budget that you already approved.
Oh, okay.
The rate?
Yes.
And I guess my question, is there a possibility for increases?
For the next budget year? No, there is not. I mean, they, they do not have an increase because of what the budget is approving is the operation, maintenance, and the two debt service, and those amounts are fixed for the next calendar year. Does that make sense?
Somewhat. And I guess the other question would be is because of the debt services, and he explained, Bobby, I guess you gave, gave Mr. Ergo a call in regards to what the debt was, and again, what was that debt for?
I believe it was for the basin that I mentioned previously, that is, in compliance with the combined sewer overflow long-term control plan. I believe it's between Columbia and Calumet, I believe.
Columbia and Calumet.
Located where the little league diamonds are currently.
Bobby, can you step up?
I believe it's an EAP, EPA mandate.
Correct.
In fact, if we did not pass this tonight, how would that affect the city, civil city?
If we didn't pass this tonight, and the time period for passage were allowed to lapse, sanitary district would then revert to its operating budget in two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and twelve, when the debt service payments became due for the sanitary district, they would be unable then to make those payments, because there would be not enough funds appropriated in order to make their debt service payments. As such, they would most likely default on their debt.
And would they have to pay penalties as well?
Yes, sir. As a matter of fact, that would most likely adversely affect the entire city and the entire city's credit rating when the city attempted to borrow funds for any projects or judgments.
Any other questions or concerns?
And Bobby, is it accurate that there is really nowhere else to go in order to enact what we're trying to do tonight except through the city proper? Because there's no other budget area that you can really ask to do this.
That's correct, Councilman Kowinski, because there's only a set amount of tax revenues. In order for one taxing entity to increase their levy, there has to be an equal reduction in another taxing entity's levy, and that levy is going to be the civil city's levy.
Any other questions or concerns?
Questions, concerns. It's your opportunity. Councilman Markovich, questions?
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote. We are voting on third and final reading of the sanitary district budget.
Mr. Chairman, point of, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Markovich.
We're voting on eleven dash thirty-nine A, correct?
Yes. It was amended. Roll call vote on eleven dash thirty-nine A.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vanez.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
O Pinker.
Yes.
Henosa. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Eight in favor, one absent. You know what I'm waiting for you to say, Clerk Golick? You know what I'm waiting for you to say? You normally say, Mr. President.
President Higgs, this concludes the ordinances for final passage.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Number nine on the agenda is introduction of ordinances.
Item A, ordinance eleven dash forty sponsored by Councilman Salinas, a petition by the Hammond Redevelopment Commission, and ordinance vacating a Porsche, a portion of alley line between lots one and two of Rimbeck and Sibley addition to the city of Hammond Lake County, Indiana. Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Salinas.
I move for a first and second reading of eleven forty, set a public hearing for November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven.
Motion is there, second.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Salinas, second by Councilman O Pinker, that we move eleven dash forty on this first and second reading by title and refer to...
Streets and alleys, committee.
Streets and alleys with a public hearing set for November fourteenth, two thousand and eleven. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Motion passes.
Item B, ordinance eleven dash forty-one sponsored by Councilman O Pinker, and ordinance to amend and replace flood hazard area ordinance number nine ninety ninety-five by establishing provisions for flood hazards in accordance with the state of Indiana model ordinance for flood hazard areas. Mr. President.
Councilman O Pinker.
I move for a first and second reading of eleven forty-one, put in council as a whole.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman O Pinker, second by Councilman Spitali, that we move eleven dash forty-one on this first and second reading by title and refer to council as a whole. Is there any discussion? Any discussion?
No.
Any discussion? I'm going to call Brian. Can you come up here for one second? One second. Again, just tell me briefly what, what are the changes in this one from the one that we passed previously?
They are technical changes that are reflective of the adoption of the new floodplain maps that will become effective in January of two thousand and twelve.
And what was those changes previously?
Well, there, again, it's just technical correct. It's, it's the, the ordinance that was passed, passed in March refers to...
Wait a minute, one second. Councilman Markovich, I am trying to conduct the meeting. Please. Go ahead.
The ordinance in March reflected the reference to the nineteen eighty-one floodplain maps that have been in effect for the past twenty-odd years, and with the, the estate is adoption, adopting new maps, and they actually have an effective date of January, I believe it was January eighteenth. eighteenth of two thousand and twelve. So, we have to amend those portions of the ordinance to make a reference to the map, the title of the map or the date of the map, and there were some other just minor language changes that were associated with that.
I guess my main concern, and then we'll go into it later because this is going in the committee, but I guess my concern is whether or not is this, how is this gonna affect those people that are in the floodplain and are they... Is this gonna help to reduce their insurance in terms of those people that live in the floodplain?
The... One of the major changes of the maps that become effective in two thousand and twelve, that is where all of the changes that occurred up in Robertsdale, that puts those into effect. If they're not technically in effect as we speak, they will be in effect in January of two thousand and twelve. We did have the Lomar that was approved in August. That affects Hessville and portions of Woodmar. Those changes technically amended the eighty-one maps, and there is language in here that reconciles that difference between that amending the eighty-one maps, because those technically don't show up on the two thousand and twelve maps. So, it's just correlating all that together.
Right, thank you. Any other discussion as the read? In terms of eleven dash forty-one? Eleven dash forty-one? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes.
Item C, ordinance eleven dash forty-two sponsored by Councilman Opinker, and ordinance designating the seventy-four hundred block of Parish Avenue as resident-only parking.
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker?
I move for first and second reading of eleven forty-two, refer to streets and alleys.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Kowinski, that we move eleven dash forty-two on the first and second reading by title and refer to streets and alleys. Any discussion on eleven dash forty-two?
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker?
We originally added seventy-five and seventy-six hundred block of Parish over by Dowling Park as resident parking, we're just adding seventy-four hundred into it.
Is there any discussion on eleven dash forty-two? Any discussion on eleven dash forty-two? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes.
Item D, ordinance eleven dash forty-three sponsored by Councilwoman Poland, and ordinance designating Madison as a one-way street going north between one hundred and seventy-first and one hundred and sixty-ninth street.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Poland?
I move eleven forty-three for first and second reading and refer to streets and alleys.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilwoman Poland, second by Councilman Spitali, that we move eleven dash forty-three on first and second reading by title and refer to streets and alleys. Is there any discussion? Councilwoman Poland, would you like to have a committee meeting on that next meeting?
I don't think that's necessary. Uh, Mr. President?
You put it in streets and alleys, so I'm just...
Okay, all right.
So, you want, on the fourteenth?
Yes.
So, we want... I need you to say, on the fourteenth, you would like to have a committee meeting scheduled.
Mr. President?
Councilwoman?
On the fourteenth, I would like to have a committee meeting on eleven forty-three.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Is there any other discussion on eleven dash forty-three?
Mr. President? I'd like the committee meeting for six-thirty.
That was Councilman Markovich's suggestion, wasn't it? I know. With the committee meeting scheduled at six-thirty. Is there any other discussion on eleven dash forty-three? Eleven dash forty-three? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
President Higgs, that concludes the introduction of ordinances.
Thank you, Clerk Golick. Resolutions is the next on the agenda, number ten, and there are none tonight, so resolutions is now closed. Number eleven is new and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. New and unfinished business, we have a couple of things due by...
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
I'd like to introduce eleven dash forty-four, Councilman Higgs, an ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another within the budget of the Hammond Common Council. Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Markovich. First, you gotta suspend the rules, you can't just jump into introducing the ordinance. You gotta make a motion to suspend the rules and then introduce the ordinance, Councilman Markovich.
Chairman, move for suspension of the rules.
Thank you. There's been a motion to suspend the rules, is there?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Salinas, that we suspend the rules. Roll call vote on the suspension of the rules.
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali.
Yes.
Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosa. Higgs.
Yes, motion passes, eight in favor and one is absent.
Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
I'd like to introduce eleven dash forty-four, an ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another within the budget of the Hammond Common Council.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Markovich and second by Councilman Opinker. Now, Clerk, can you read that ordinance, please?
Eleven dash forty-four sponsored by Councilman Higgs, and ordinance authorizing the city controller to transfer from one line item to another within the budget of the Hammond Common Council.
That's not necessary. Okay. Now, the motion was made and there was a second. Is there any discussion on eleven dash forty-four?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Kowinski?
Is it going in the committee?
Um, I'm the sponsor, I didn't introduce the ordinance, so you would have to ask the person that introduced it.
Asking it out in general.
There's a motion and second on the floor, but there's discussion, so what is the pleasure of the council? Councilman? Councilman Markovich?
Mr. Chairman, motions for first and second reading.
Okay. Is there any other discussion on the first and second reading? Any other discussion on the first and second reading? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
Move for final passes and adoption of eleven dash forty-four.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Markovich, second by Councilman Salinas, that we pass eleven dash forty-four. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on eleven dash forty-four?
Markovich.
Yes.
Spitali. Vines. Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosa. Higgs.
Yes, motion passes. Seven yeses, one no, and one absent.
I have six yeses, one no, two absent.
Six yeses, one no, and one absent.
Only one absent up there?
Correction. Six yeses, one no.
Miss Spitali's vote?
Yes, you did.
You voted yes.
Yes.
I did not hear it, I apologize.
So, that would be...
Seven.
Which was correct, seven yeses, one no, and one absent. That was the vote. Motion? Passes. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker?
I would like to bring out eleven thirty-nine as amended for third and final passage.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Opinker, second by Councilman Salinas, to pass eleven dash thirty-nine as amended. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion on eleven dash thirty-nine amended? Any discussion? Any discussion? Roll call vote on eleven dash thirty-nine?
Markovich. Spitali. Vines.
Yes.
Kowinski.
Yes.
Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
Yes.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosa. Higgs.
Yes. Councilman Markovich, what is your pleasure? I know you're off the floor. Do you wanna vote on this or no? Moving on. You got about one second. Six yeses and two absent. Man, one, two, three. Seven yeses and two absent. Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business.
President?
Councilman Spitali?
I make a motion for one meeting for the month of November, which will be November fourteenth.
Second.
Well, we need to... First, you need to make a motion to revert back to the regular order of business.
I make that motion.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Salinas, that we revert back to the regular order of business. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Motion passes. New and unfinished business, new and unfinished business. Councilman?
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali?
I make that motion for one meeting in the month of November for the fourteenth.
Second.
There's been motion by Councilman Spitali, that we have one meeting in the month of November, November fourteenth, and second by Councilman Salinas, is there any discussion on the one meeting for November?
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
November fourteenth is a scheduled meeting. I don't know why we're voting to schedule it again.
Well, in essence, what he's trying to tell you, that there will only be one meeting, and that meeting that's scheduled on the fourteenth will be the only meeting that will be held if this motion should pass.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Markovich?
What he should be doing is canceling the November twenty-eighth meeting, then.
Is that your pleasure?
That's not my pleasure, I have no problem with having two meetings.
Okay, but the motion was that we are only gonna have one meeting, so that's how he worded it, and, you know, it's no difference in the wording. You wanna phrase it one way, he phrased it that particular way. Okay? It's all clear that it would only be one meeting in November. Is there any other discussion as it relates to one meeting being held in November? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Roll call vote on one meeting in November.
Markovich?
No.
Spitali. Vines. Kowinski. Salinas.
Yes.
Poland.
No.
Opinker.
Yes.
Enosa. Higgs.
Yes. Motion passes. Six yeses, two no, and one absent. New and unfinished business.
Mr. President?
Councilman Spitali?
I had sent a letter to Gary Gleason for a proposal for the no littering signs throughout the city. It would be three hundred with proper posting of main and sub-main streets and thirty no littering signs for each park throughout the city, with four corners of each park with the no littering sign. There's not been a date given when those will be put up.
So, it's your pleasure, Councilman Spitali, that let it go to Gary Gleason in regards to having those signs put up?
Gary Gleason, I sent... We had a letter sent to Gary Gleason two meetings ago, and he just sent the letter back stating that he would be able to do this, but the date was not set, but there would be those three hundred for the proper posting for the main streets and sub-streets, and thirty for the parks, which would be posted in all four corners of each park. Dates were not given.
Did you pay for them, or what are you saying here?
He agreed to be able to push this through, no problem, but there was not any dates given when this would be posted, when the signs would be posted.
So, what is your pleasure? I'm trying to get some clarity as to what you would like to be done.
That's exactly what we needed to have done. Perfect.
So, you're just clarifying the fact that he sent you the letter?
That is correct.
What you requested?
That is correct.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Yes, Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanessa?
Uh, yes, I'd like to announce on behalf of the Eastside Community Council, they're hosting a trunk-or-treat event at the Hammond Civic Center this coming Saturday, the twenty-ninth, from six to eight P.M. They're going to have decorated cars for those who volunteer to participate, and they're going to have candy for children, again, who choose to participate. They thought this was something a little bit different in our area that was safe and fun for the children and the families. They will also be giving away prizes for the best costume, best decorated car, and any organization in the city of Hammond is welcome to participate. Councilman Spitali and I will have a vehicle in the event.
Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilwoman Vanessa?
Yes, I'd like to announce a fundraiser for a gentleman who grew up in the South Hammond area. His name is Rich Naraki. He has medical complications as the result of juvenile diabetes. His family is hosting a spaghetti dinner fundraiser on November fourth at the Knights of Columbus Hall in East Chicago from four to ten P.M. The cost of the dinner is ten dollars for an adult and five dollars for children under the age of twelve. They're going to be having a bake sale, raffle table, raffle tickets, and a fifty-fifty drawing. Rich's mother happens to be a neighbor of mine, and she's looking to get the word out for anyone who may have gone to school with her husband, or, I mean, with her son, or perhaps knows her. This is a very worthwhile event. Rich is only thirty-nine years old and the father of four children, has been without a job for some time because of his medical complications. If anyone is interested in purchasing tickets, you can see me or give me a call at my home, Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Councilman Salinas, you jumped up there like you was ready to say something.
Oh, I was, I was just waiting for somebody else. Mr. President?
Councilman Salinas?
I'm doing some renovation at Irving Park, we're putting new playground equipment, so I don't want nobody to get scared, but it's gonna be a lot of work done over there. Thank you.
Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business?
Mr. President?
Councilman Opinker?
I'd like to announce in the fifth district, we'll be having a cleanup starting the first of November through the eighth. There'll be approximately twenty dumpsters scattered throughout the fifth districts, and you can get them addresses through either CR publication or be published in the Times. Thank you.
That's the best ordinance that I couldn't came up with, ain't it? Everybody used that cleanup, ain't it?
I started it. I started that.
Now, you can't take the credit for that, I'm a councilman. Any other new and unfinished business? Any other new unfinished business? Any other new and unfinished business? New and unfinished business is now closed. First speaker of the night is Juan...
Andrade.
Andrade.
Juan Andrade, forty-zero-five Elm Street, in East Chicago, Indiana. I'm president of the Northwest Indiana Reinvestment Alliance. Gene Nisman is the executive director, the office is in Hammond, and what I wanted to do was just promote some of the things that we're doing right now in reference for the public that have to do with either them getting assistance or free counseling in areas of homelessness, fair housing, pre-purchase of homes, credit report readings, financial literacy, home ownership, post-purchase, and landlord-tenant rights. The alliance does a lot more... Uh, the, uh, alliance does a lot more than this, but, uh, these are things that are being promoted right now up until, uh, November the thirtieth of this year, and we're asking, uh, those, you know, the people, community, individuals that are interested to, uh, contact the alliance at nine-three-one-nine-three-hundred, or, um, you can email Ms. Pam Stalling at, uh, P-S-T-A-L-L-I-N-G at hotmail dot com. Uh, also in addition to that, I myself and, uh, Eve Gomez, we have what may be, I think, the only bilingual program in Northwest Indiana called nuestra comunidad, Northwest Indiana, which is our community in Northwest Indiana. Uh, we're on every Saturday morning from eight to nine o'clock in the morning on W L T H thirteen-seventy A.M. radio. So, um, I just came from my own city's, uh, council meeting, which starts at six o'clock in East Chicago, and we'd like to offer our program also as a source of information to promote any activities, meetings, or functions that may be going on in the city of Hammond. Our email is nuestra, N-U-E-S-T-R-A underscore comunidad, C-O-M-U-N-I-D-A-D underscore N-W-I at yahoo dot com. Uh, we are online, uh, and like I said, we may be the only bilingual program in Northwest Indiana, so we'd like to offer our program to promote any, uh, events that may be going on in the city of Hammond. Also, I know for, for a fact too, that, uh, the Salvation Army right now is hiring of the people that ring the bell, you know, with, next to the Red Kettles. Uh, you have to take your social security card, as well as either a state I.D. or your driver's license. I don't know if they're taking applications at all, the Salvation Armies, but I do know for sure that the one on Chicago Avenue in East Chicago and forty-eight-hundred Harrison Street in Gary are taking applications, and they do pay to do that, uh, and they're taking applications right now. Thank you.
And that's a great thing that Salvation Army does, because every year I watch on the news and around Christmas time, some anonymous donor goes around and he puts quite expensive dollar coins in there every year. Gold pieces or something, yeah. Every year. That is awesome. But that's a great thing. Next speaker is, and I, I'd like to have your card and like to do a workshop with you as well, okay, in my district, so make sure you give me your information. Next speaker is Richard Corano.
Well, hello, uh, City Council. Uh, my name's Richard Corano. Uh, people in Hammond call me Rosco. Uh, I'm bringing up, uh, an ordinance, uh, number nine oh nine eight, uh, that was, uh, uh, passed on March of, uh, two thousand and eleven. This ordinance pertains to, uh, uh, license requirements and restrictions for a mobile catering caterer or itinerant, itinerant restaurant and vendors in Hammond, Indiana. I have a few issues with this, uh, with this o- ordinance, because, uh, uh, I'm a, I'm so, I'm a so-called, uh, mobile restaurant catering business. And I've been working on these issues because I disagree with how this logic came up as far as, um, why this ordinance was even created. I don't know. Um, number one, uh, I'd like to bring up, page one states, uh, whereas traveling vendors, food carts, food stands, food vendors, ice cream trucks, ice cream carts, and other providers, while beneficiary, beneficiary to the community, do increase traffic, cause parking issues, compete with taxpaying businesses, and contributing to additional noise, congestion, and litter in residential areas. I, uh, I'd like to know from City Council how they concluded that this mobile catering, um, uh, creates these, uh, unsafe conditions. Uh, I did a little research on, um, any citations that were given to, uh, a mobile caterer in the city of Hammond, and I found none. There's, has been never any that, well, not never, but I'm just saying within the, let, since two thousand and three, once this, when I started this business, there has never been a citation for any of these, these issues that pertain to the mobile caterer. Another issue I want to bring up is, uh, City Council people ask me why I want to be a mobile caterer, and why don't I just open up a brick building restaurant-type business? And my answer to this is, I want to be a mobile catering licensed person, and I have a right to do so. I mean, that's my, that's my option. I feel like that, that's what I was, that's what I'm doing, and I've been doing this since two thousand and three. I don't feel, I have, I have a permanent, uh, I have a permanent brick building resident, I mean, a business. It's at seventy-three forty-seven Missouri Avenue, Hammond, Indiana. Partial number four-five-one-two-three-two-nine-four-seven-four-dash-zero-zero. Taxing District, Hammond, Indiana. This is, uh, uh, a business, the business tax I pay for this prop, for this business I have. So as far as saying that I don't have a brick building business is incorrect. I do have one. And I showed it to all you council people before. But I think there was some confusion as far as, uh, uh, that I don't have a brick building. Another issue I want to bring up is that it's brought up, it's been brought up to me that I do not pay very much business tax, which I, I don't understand. Business tax is created by the value of your business. Just because I'm a small, small, small business and not a Petro's or a McDonald's or anything like that, I'm still a legal business person in the city of Hammond. Another issue I have is, uh, that was, uh, on page two of this ordinance, uh, why does City Council feel that a yearly permit for a mobile food vendor should only be fifteen days in a calendar year? I don't understand that philosophy. I have a yearly city permit to operate in the city of Hammond, and now this new ordinance only gives me fifteen days in one calendar year. I don't understand where that number came from. But I do have a, a yearly, which yearly to main means three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Uh, then there, and in the ordinance also states I have to be within a, I have to be two hundred feet from, uh, of any intersection in the city of Hammond in order to do business. Uh, I, I live in Hammond.
Mr. Rosco, I know you got a lot to discuss, but can you like?
Okay, okay, um.
Get to the end of this.
Well, another issue, one more, one more issue I have is, uh, I feel that, uh, I'm being personally attacked or whatever, because there are mobile food vendors in the city of Hammond still operating in violation of this ordinance. For instance, First Baptist Church on Sunday in downtown Hammond, on Willow Court. I brought it up to the attention of council before, and they said they would ta- uh, take care of it or whatever, and nothing's ever been done. I've been working on this issue since, uh, this ordinance was created in March two thousand and eleven. I don't know what.
It's, it's public expression, but I will just go briefly, go over a little bit about, and could bring you up to speed in regards to that particular ordinance. Again, as I stated to you previously, I was against it. Councilman Markovich was against it. Councilman Salinas was against it, and also Councilman in the house. Um, you know, and it's unfortunate, you know, I feel as though people need to make a decent, uh, living, and I don't feel it's anything wrong with it, and for a number of years, that was people's only livelihood, so, you know. As I try to direct you in, in, in some avenues to try to get it resolved, and hopefully we can come up to some resolution in regards to that. I would urge you to continue to your fight and, and keep lobbying, especially particularly, uh, those individuals who voted in regards against that particular ordinance, okay?
Could I mention one more thing before?
Voted in favor.
One more thing real quick. Um, it also tells me I have to keep, keep moving like an ice cream truck. I got a hot dog business which requires steam for my hot dogs.
I'm very, I'm very familiar with the oil.
And I, and I have oil. I did try it this Sunday. I drove down Calumet Avenue. I drove down Kennedy Avenue, one mile an hour. I'm moving. I'm doing it. I'm looking to the left. I'm looking to the right. I'm trying to find my customers. If that's not an un- unsafe condition, I don't know what is.
Well, again, as I stated to you, I didn't vote, uh, in favor of it, and with the exception, it's only one of my, one or two of my colleagues, I don't think that were here at that particular time, but, um, I would urge you to continue and just, you know.
I mean, to hopefully continue by, keep.
Because I understand that, that's your livelihood, and you're trying to make a decent living, and you're not, to me, it's not like you're committing, uh, or breaking the law, but, and, and the other thing that you brought up in caucus, neither one of us stated to you in regards to, uh, you should just buy a building or whatever. That wasn't us. That was the city attorney. None of us said that.
No. I disagree.
Well, we, I was in caucus when she.
I mean, not at this caucus. It wasn't at a caucus meeting where this was told to me.
Oh, well, I don't know where that comes from. I just know what I heard today.
Right. It was not at a caucus meeting that that was brought up to my, that my small.
Valid point, well taken, and hopefully something can come out of it, and, and I think you had a meeting with the chief of staff, so hopefully you guys can get something resolved in regards to that, or either they can repeal the ordinance.
Uh, is it, is it my, is it my understanding that if, if Mayor McDermott is elected, ma- uh, we have a new chief of staff, and then I have to deal with another, go through it again?
I can't tell you what the administration is going to do. I can only.
I mean, I know he's temporary, and, and now I'm going to be.
Well, what happens is, November eighth, we'll, we'll, we'll all see who's going to be the mayor for the next four years of four-year term. And whether or not he changes his administration or not.
Right.
This body has the authority to change the ordinance.
So that, it could be, it could be saying that he might have a different chief of staff, and I would have to go through my issues all over again with a new chief of staff.
Not necessarily. I would urge you, uh, Councilman Salina, not Councilman Salinas, Councilman Kowinski led the pack on that. As I stated to you previously, you need to have a meeting with Councilman Kowinski and try to see if he can come up with some remedies as to this particular ordinance, sir.
Maybe the fact of the matter is, maybe I shouldn't even be a, considered a mobile food vendor since I have a permanent place of business. I don't know.
I think, and, and, you know, we've been, we've been going on and on about this particular, particular ordinance, and, and what happened was, uh, one of our constituents came to the, to the council and said, hey, you know, I have a hot dog stand here, and this man across the street is selling hot dogs, and I pay taxes, and why are they selling hot dogs across the street from me and not moving?
I pay taxes too.
So I'm just telling you how it all came about.
One more thing, if I can bring up, then I'll, I'll leave you alone. Uh, mobile catering food vendors are ice cream trucks, are, uh, festival vendors, which I am also. I have to, I have to abide by this ordinance. I'm talking about Festival of the Lakes. I'm talking about any kind of festival in the city of Hammond. This ordinance is meant for the mobile food vendor, and they are part of the ordinance, and they are in violation. Ice cream trucks, food trucks.
Thank you, Mr. Rosco.
Festivals. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Next speaker is Carlotta King.
Good afternoon, Council. Um, Councilman Hicks, would you share this with him? I think he might want to share this with, uh, one of his constituents after I speak, perhaps. Good evening, Council. I am Carlotta, and I am so proud to come before you announcing that the C B K Performing Arts Center finally opened October first, and, uh, we're currently located at sixty-nine forty-seven Holman Avenue, and that's in your district, Kim. Uh, C B K Performing Arts Center, Inc., is a five-oh-one-C-three organization developed with the purpose of exposing students to the arts. Our cultural, our center is multifaceted, multicultural facility, which fe- features a blended curriculum. We boast a trained staff and experienced board of directors, and we feel they're second to none. Our talents are well represented in the fields of dance, which is ballet, modern, jazz, and hip-hop. We also offer martial arts, uh, modeling classes, Chinese language, drama, theater. And, uh, in, in January, we will be offering poetry writing classes as well. We, uh, firmly believe that by introducing our students to the arts, it creates a healthy mind and body, and a desire for these students to explore life with a more heightened sense of self-worth and cultural realism. We have adopted First Lady Michelle Obama's, uh, philosophy, which says, uh, get our kids moving. And in, in doing so, it reduces juvenile diabetes, obesity, and hypertension within our youth, and we know our young folks are struggling with this today because of the lack of these types of activities in our school system. So again, we're just here to announce our opening. Um, we're, our classes are every Saturday. We're there from, um, ten A.M. to one-thirty P.M. So, um, spread the word. Uh, students can re- register on our website, which is, uh, W-W-W dot C-B-K-Aarts-Center dot org, or you could, uh, just give me a call at two-five-six-one-seven-seven-zero. And we are so excited to be in the city of Hammond, offering such a worthwhile and needed service. Thank you so very much. And I do have some marketing materials if any of you wish to, um, to, to read it. And we are in our planning stages for our ribbon-cutting and open house, and, uh, as soon as that is planned, you are on our list, top list, top of the list. Thank you so very much.
Next speaker is George Doria. Uh, Reverend, you have anything you want to say tonight? Reverend, you have anything you would like to say tonight?
Yes, I just, uh, wanted to, uh, say that, uh, excuse me, to the council that, uh, at this time, you know, we're, we don't know really where we stand, uh, with our homes, our neighborhood. Uh, we were told that, uh, you know, we were not going to be affected directly and directly. And, uh, I remember last, uh, meeting, uh, the mayor told, uh, Councilman Salinas to get us off, uh, acquisition list. And, uh, so I really, uh, need to talk to Councilman Salinas to see, you know, where we at. But, uh, uh, we don't know, you know, what's going to happen, uh, after the elections. And, uh, so, uh, basically, that's all I wanted to say, uh.
Thank you, Reverend.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
Second.
It's been motion by Councilman Spitali, second by Councilman Salinas, that we adjourn from this meeting. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any nays? Motion passes.